Yeah, I sit way in the back.
Uh, meeting on day of the.
Yeah, April 3rd. I don't know why did they go that May 1st? For some random reason, but yeah, they did it.
It's Chris.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. But Derek, it's nothing against the city.
Howdy, Mayor.
I'll use the internet audio.
We need to tell him we see you.
I see you.
Okay, hey there. I don't see you yet. I must hit the wrong button. So I need to see.
I mean, they can, we can see you. Yeah, say, we can see you.
You can see me fine. Okay. All right. I'm gonna put this in my homemade cellphone. There he goes. How about now?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Am I visible?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no.
Actually, Rex, you're not visible on your phone. I can just see you on the Bree screen.
You're right, exactly. I don't need to see myself.
Uh, are you actually broadcasting now, Bree, or?
Uh, Bree, or what about volume? Okay. I've got my microphone on.
Commissioner Ashbrook, do you hear Mayor okay?
I can hear the mayor.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, I'll stay six feet apart out there. Yeah. All right. Easiest way to spread it is touching your face. That's why they're talking about face mask. Not that it's gonna protect you from getting it, but it keeps your hands off of your face. If you touch something that had it on there and touched your face, you might as well forget it. You got it. But what I read today, the virus is real wimpy when it comes to sanitizing and so. It can't deal with with that. So anyway, interesting time. Somebody else dialing in, looks like.
So they do let April 3rd, you outgoing, bye till you wanna go by.
Okay.
Okay. Hello, everybody. We will call the regular public meeting in the City Commission to order. The first item on the agenda, consent agenda, is Resolution 2020-04, which rules for teleconferencing public meetings. Mr. Attorney, do you need to read that? Or do you need us just to to make motion to pass on it?
The commissioners have reviewed it. They can look at it and you can vote on whether you want to adopt it or not. Then I will have a review.
Okay. I assume everybody's looked at resolution, which is allowed under the governor's executive order that we can, we conduct our meetings by teleconference. Mr. Jim?
Mayor, I did have one comment from Commissioner Hoffman that pointed out that we probably need to change one word. Go right down on page one, under number one, where it says created by the City Commission shall. May want to change "shall" to "may" to be a person, be a recommendation.
I have no problem with that. Yeah. Shall not. Okay. You guys got that, if they can, if they would like to or they cannot. Okay. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020, which is teleconference public meetings? I'll make motion. There's a motion by Mr. Lowry, is there?
Mayor, I'd like to be the first second online.
Okay. Commissioner Ashbrook, who's online, was second in motion. I heard a discussion on that. All in favor, aye. Aye, aho, same sign, motion carried five and o.
Resolution 2004, a resolution of the City of Port St. Joe, Florida, setting up the technical protection for the teleconference thing for public meetings. I didn't think it affected anything.
Very good. Okay. Very first resolution under the new teleconference rules. Won't last too much longer, but anyway. Now we're into the minutes of regular meeting, March 17th, and our emergency meeting, March 30th. Everybody had a chance to look over those. And so, uh, get a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Langston. Second, I was like, second by Commissioner Lowry. The previous minutes of 317 and 330. Any discussion on those? All in favor, aye. The same sign, motion passed, aye and o. All right, we're down to the planning. We know what the recommendations are. So at this time, we'll turn it over to our city attorney to to go over those ordinance for.
On there, the first ordinance is five, ordinance number 569, a voluntary annexation request. What I need from the commission is a vote to acquire the first reading. It's not for adoption, it's for strictly.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. My name is Laura Mills-Gutcher, and I am working on behalf of the applicant, Tiramore, and we would like to request that we table this item for the time being.
Okay, we last talked to him, oh, an hour ago, and they were wanting us to move forward. So you have, you've changed that now?
Yes, we have new information, and we would like to table it or actually just put it on hold for right now.
We can do that.
Thank you.
And so with that, we'll move on to, it tables 571. Also, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, it does.
All right. So, all right, those have been tabled. So now we're down to Resolution 2020-03, city election results.
Yes, Mayor, as you know, we have two of our commissioners ran unopposed, and we elected their commission. A resolution 2003, be resolved by the City of Port St. Joe, Florida. Section one, we declared by yesterday, found determined to declare for federal elections, federal for state of the month, 2020. Three, Commissioner Group Four was not held by the City of Port St. Joe, neither through the Brett C. Lowry, nor Arthur S. Hoffman. Section two, no votes were cast. There were no votes cast in Commissioner Three. Commissioner Brett C. Lowry did not have any opposition. Office and C, there were no votes cast. Group Four is Commissioner Arthur S. Hoffman. Did not have any opposition.
You need to go. Motion to adopt that resolution.
Correct.
So we're going to get a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-03, city election results. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All right, Commissioner Ashbrook. Any discussion on that? Which is a graduation. Go forward to both those guys. No opposition, but forward to working with you for a couple more years. And any more discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, aho, same sign, motion passed, five of. Next item?
Yes, Mayor, this is on the next item, the ordinance 571, which is an update. This would be a first reading. So I need a motion and a vote to have to conduct the first reading of this ordinance.
Ordinance 571. So good. Motion by Commissioner Lowry, is there a second?
I said.
Second by Commissioner Hoffman, who, uh, first reading of ordinance 571. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passed, five of.
Ordinance number 571, ordinance of the City of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending the Capitol. And then to provide your Capitol people. Adopting the uprooting school that provided your work. Providing for the two of all working for part of the order. Outfit, providing for some ability, providing for.
Very good. That's all I have, Mayor. All you got, Mr. Attorney. All right, sir. Let's go to old business, coronavirus COVID-19 update.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, we cannot hear anybody besides yourself, Mr. Mayor.
Who am I speaking to?
This is the county attorney, Jeremy Novak. I'm outside the door. I was told to call in, but we can't hear anybody besides your voice. So I believe Clint just spoke, but we couldn't understand anything he just said, sir.
Can you hear me now, Mayor? Testing. Can you hear me, Jeremy?
I can hear you now, Clint. Thank you.
All right, what about Mayor, this Rex? You hear that, Jeremy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I can hear you now.
Okay. I'll put a coaster in my mouth then.
We appreciate that very much, sir.
All right. Just tell Jeremy that the ordinance 569 and 571 was tabled by the.
Right. Did you hear that, Jeremy?
I did.
The annexation request and the small-scale plan amendment was just tabled. Their representative called in and said they'd like to table it for now. So that's been tabled.
Thank you. I understand that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you clarifying that.
Okay, no. Okay, coronavirus 19, COVID-19 update. Beside me, anybody else like to speak on that? Okay. Go ahead, Jim. You had your.
Mayor, I'm just gonna have a couple of things that this board needs to consider today. The first being the boat ramp. Currently, right now, you have your boat ramp closed through next, closing business next Tuesday. Making a statement on that as to how you want to move forward with the boat ramp. And also, Chief Herring has had some calls and reference to non-essential businesses. I think he's looking for some kind of clarity on that. You actually have a 19-page document that was sent out from the governor's office and allow what can be open on there. But I think you've got a couple of questions.
Okay, Chief, you have questions about the essential businesses?
I just need you guys to clarify if a business is open, is not classified as an essential business, what you want the police department to do? How you want us to move forward?
Mr. Mayor, I.
Go ahead and.
I know when I watched the the announcement from the governor, the governor was actually asked that question from one of the reporters in the room. And the governor's response was, he's not asking for enforcement to focus on the business. Rather, he would be asking for the enforcement to be focused on the people going to a non-essential business. That, that was his answer. So I think we would probably be wise to follow that same suggestion.
Which, which I assume would be the no more than 10 in a group, six feet and all of that? Is that what you're talking about?
The way that I took it was, let's say you have a business that is not on the list, and they're advertising to be open. Instead of focusing on going and getting into the issue of interpreting, if they can articulate that, well, really, we are on the list under this category. His direction was to focus on the people and go to the, you would have to make contact with the person or people that are at the business, and you would say, why are you here? We have declared this to be a non-essential business. So therefore, your stay-at-home order has been violated by leaving the house to go somewhere that's not on a permitted activity or business. What do you feel about that interpretation? Does that make it more difficult?
I think that's almost ludicrous. It puts us in a spot where we're having to chase down a lot of.
I know. When I heard that, I.
If you stop me in a store and tell me it's non-essential, I'm gonna say then why isn't this guy's business open?
Correct.
I would, I would think, I would think you should ask the owner of the business, why is he open?
And I had the same question when, when I watched it on the internet or on the television. I was thinking, well, you would be putting the officers in a position where you have to go back and go back and go back. And by me sharing that, I'm not in any way saying I support it. I just said, I saw that.
I think that's part of the problem. Well, I would say, I reviewed the list of essential business. Just, you can, he's a state of business. You can find a way to make it essential in that list. There's just so many different categories, subcategories. You could work out a way to find that source. It is really hard to interpret.
I would just say, too many times we say use your judgment, but you do it every day and you have to. But if they're not on the list, you need to ask them why they're open. And if they don't provide a satisfactory answer, you just, I would say, you know, time in. But I would say unless they can find something that says they are essential, they, they shouldn't be open. All it's doing is attracting people, and we're trying to keep people apart.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I feel like it's long, they're open. If they're open, people gonna come. They're gonna come. Essential, non-essential, whoever opens up, people are coming. They don't want to be in the house. It's, you can see that, you know? People don't want to stay inside and not take this. So they're gonna come. If it's open, they're coming.
One thing I've known is, our businesses are doing pretty good job.
They are. A lot of them are.
Has a guy standing up there, there's going five people out into the store at a time. Different business are going. They could, everybody's doing that now.
But you do have some, you know, one, like you say, one bad apple's falling off, you know, it's falling a whole bunch. You do have some that are not doing what they're supposed to do. You know, we were doing an excellent job. A few other businesses off, but you know, that one, that one bad apple's falling a whole bunch. So I'm back to 100%, whatever you decide to do. I mean, if you want to go and tell them you need to close it, and because they're not, not essential, close them down.
Good. Yep, we got your back. Okay. Um, anything else, Jim?
The program, Mayor.
Yeah, let me, let me make a couple of comments before going to that. It's mainly, it's been since March 17th, we were last up here talking about COVID-19 and how we wanted to be the safest city in the state. So far, knock on wood, I think we are. But that's a tribute to the folks that are out there doing what they're supposed to do. And just wanted to thank the, everybody that's out there working, especially our staff, the police department, first responders. But then, of course, hospital workers, and you go on and on and look at all our businesses in town that are staying open to, to help us. Restaurants are staying open. They're still employing some people. Look at the grocery stores, convenience stores. They're all out there on the front lines. Those are cashiers at, at the, all the businesses for that matter, especially the grocery stores and the hardware store, where there's, they're having a limit who goes in there. So I think everybody's taking it seriously. And I, but I really wanted to applaud and thank those folks that are staying open because they don't really have to. They're doing it because they feel like they're, they're more than essential. Just like our, our city staff is, is more than essential to keeping us going. And I certainly appreciate what they're doing. It just get warm in my heart. And if we can hang on two more weeks, I think, I think in the next probably seven days, if everybody will really pay attention to do what they're supposed to do, we might can stay where we are. But I will warn you, in the next seven days, from, from the health experts I've talked to and the other experts, they're, they're kind of fearful for us in the next seven days. So do, don't take it for granted right now that we're over the hump, because I think we're, we're getting ready to get some. We're pretty much surrounded right now. And it's just closing in on us. But if we do what we're supposed to do, then I think we're gonna be fine. The hospital's ready. They're, they're geared up. They've, they've been practicing every scenario that, that needs to be practiced in case we get it bad. And so, of course, the health departments, thank goodness for them staying on top of it every day. But all want to stay safe. And, and the mask thing, I mean, I want to talk about the mask scenario for a little bit. The mask will not keep you from getting the virus. What it does, it keeps you indirectly from getting it because when you touch something that has, has it on there and you come to your face, then you got it. That's, there's no two ways about it. If you've got a mask on, it'll keep you, if you go to your face, you're gonna end up touching the mask. So that's the whole theory behind the mask is keep your hands away from your face. So keep sanitizing, social distance. Wear your mask if you're comfortable out wearing it. If you're not, just sanitize frequently. Anybody else got any comments on?
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Actually, it's for the, for the chief. Do we have the PPE that's required to help protect our officers if they come in contact with somebody? They're the ones, they're our first responders making contact with these out-of-town guests. And I'm wondering if our police department has any masks or gloves available?
He's shaking his head. And we don't have any, but I don't know about availability. Chief, do you know about that? Do we need to ratchet up that? Chief's coming forward, Commissioner. So you, hold on a minute.
We don't have any PPP masks, if that's what you refer to, the N95 mask. We're supposed to get some today. We're supposed to be fitted by the health department on Thursday afternoon, and they're gonna give each officer and our secretary a warrant.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we avoid any, any liability. If we're putting our employees at risk. If we're putting our employees at risk due to their position, we need to do whatever we can to protect them. So thank you, Chief. That's, the M-95 masks will be great.
Yeah, they, the police department, I know, keeps a sanitizer on them just about twenty-four seven and they're, they're doing what they need to do short of, short of wearing a mask. But in the meantime, if they wanna wear a mask, just a cloth-type mask till they get in N-95, so that's, that'll work too. But it's just for their own protection. It's not gonna help them if somebody comes up and coughs on them.
Mr. Mayor, I did wanna add one thing for the public's info. And I know they probably already know that we have people from these hotspots that are still coming to our town, in our county. And be mindful when you're out, if you go out, that these, these people are coming in from these hotspot communities where the virus is big. It's hard to keep them out, but I mean, stay in. That's the main thing.
Yeah, there's no doubt the governor's first order did list of closest state to us from Georgia listed and they're, they're supposed to self-quarantine for fourteen days and they come in. But my wife ran in one at the grocery store yesterday from Georgia and then she knew that, that just came in. So they're not, they're not doing what they're supposed to do and I don't know how to control it. Anyway, I appreciate that comment because they're still here.
One other thing, what about the boat ramp?
Okay, let's, let's open it up for discussion of the boat ramp. That's, that's a pretty hot topic and I know a lot of us taking some heat from it, but folks need to understand, we didn't do it for us, we did it for them. And so, open forward for discussion on that.
Where we, I'll start, but we're how many days into it before it sunsets?
Seven more days.
Okay. I would, I'd like to bring some of the discussion up and maybe, and I'm all, I'm in unity with the board, what the board wants to do, but I'd like to consider something where we maybe allow Florida residents. And it could be lifting it as of now, or let's let it sunset and allow Florida residents use of it. And maybe put some signage up. But I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
I'll tell you where I stand on it. You've heard me say, first time I brought up, that I wish we could figure out a way that our locals could utilize it. And then we discussed the possibility of that, of the option of that. The more we discussed it, the more I felt like it wasn't doable because it put our police department or our code enforcement personnel in a position where they were down there having to verify that some were allowed to use it, some weren't allowed to use it. And I've spoken to a few people that were crazy about the idea and I've asked them, I said, well, if you can come up with a way that we can open that landing for a certain group of people, either Florida residents or, or those that had the decal or county residents. If you come up with a way that doesn't jeopardize or demand either the police department or code enforcement to be down there looking at driver's license and all those things, then I'd like to hear it. And I haven't come up with that solution, nor have I heard anyone else come up with it. That's my biggest concern currently is if we open it back up, we're gonna have to have somebody down there verifying. And one person said, well, just put a sign up. And we all know that it's not gonna work, or I don't think it will work. And then we discussed the legalities of allowing the boat landing for some and not allowing it for others. I think we'd have to discuss that further before we moved in that direction. But I, I still wish there was a way we could open the boat landing, maybe for Gulf County residents. But I can't figure out how we can do that without jeopardizing someone down there being exposed to every person that watches. And then when I supported and went along with the idea of closing it down for fourteen days, it was with the idea that the county was gonna follow suit and close at least White City Boat Landing and Indian Pass Landing. And as far as I've been told, those are still open. There were two hundred vehicles at White City. Now, there was a bass tournament, which I'm gonna guess was probably fifty. But that's another hundred and fifty people still launching at White City. And now the groupers season will just open. There's no telling how many are launching at Indian Pass. So I was quite disappointed that, that we didn't hear from the county, them close at least those two landings.
Yeah, I, I'll piggyback on that a little bit. They couldn't easily done it and supported us just, just for the two weeks because they don't, it's not a money-making, you know, they don't make money off of it like we do. I mean, we're, we're, we're giving up quite a bit of money the two weeks we're closed, which, you know, it doesn't make or break us. But on his county, I didn't see any rationale for them to, even though they say, go out fishing, go out and do this, go out and do that. But that's not the point. The point is folks from states that heavily impacted, like Commissioner Lowry said, they're coming because they can, they got somewhere. I mean, when we closed ours, Presnell's, the owner of Presnell's immediately closed theirs. I, you know, appreciate them doing that. I know the State Park boat ramp's closed because the State Park's closed. So anyways, neither here nor there, but, but I've got an idea and it's close to what Commissioner Hoffman alluded to, but it would allow, we can't, we can't. Gulf County, because everybody in the county doesn't have a Florida tag and has Gulf on it. So that's out the window. The other part, I would say, we would allow it for Florida residents, of all others would be towed at the owner's expense. And then we'd leave it up to the tow truck people to lease it. They'd have a harder time loading up a truck with a trailer on it, but they could put a boot on the tire where the folks couldn't, couldn't leave until they call a tow truck company and pay their money to get it unbooted. So, I mean, we could do that and that would, that would keep the police from having to go down there unless they had to go break up a five-twenty tow truck guy that somebody was, he was towing. But anyway, that was just another option because I wanna open it for locals there. There, you know, I got a lot of friends that are not real happy about it, but they understand. That was the only scenario I can, that would allow us to open it up. And even if we did, both could do that, I would say, let seven days sunset and then put that restriction in place after the seven days. Because I think the next seven days is gonna be critical for us.
Yeah, I'll do it until the sunset, you know, analyze and see what happened during this, this week. And then, you know, I'll be happy to open it back up if everything is, is, we came to an apex in the back of life there, but I understand what Commissioner Lowry's saying, you know, people getting acid, you know, they wanna, know the water, breathing, especially. I, I really understand that. But right now, I think with the thing that's going on within our, our city itself as far as people grouping up and boarding chairs, things of that nature, police has a lot to do. Not kind of nine-one-one calls or other calls that they have to take care of. So I think just waiting to see, just waiting to see, several more days. I hate to stop you from going out, having a good time, but right now, it's time to start thinking ahead. With that said, I think we need to look at that on, on this big thirty thing I'm sitting in my living room. It may, it may extend, you know, it's a cause of what happens in the next two weeks. So it's just time to, right now, buckle down and see what happens and move forward after that. But Commissioner Lowry makes some good points. I just, we need to wait to see sunset.
You know, I would say it again, our city is, is, we have no positive cases. I won't say we're virus-free, we just have no positive cases identified now. But if we can keep it that way, it would just be a feather in our cap to, to do that. So we love our visitors, we need our visitors to survive, but right now, it's not time for them to be coming down here, even though they're, they're at the Cape, they're driving through town, heading to White City. I've watched them do it. And I feel a little bit of those folks out in White City because it's a small, tight knit community with a lot of, a lot of seniors out there. And hope somebody doesn't stop at that store and spread, leave it there and get it spread. So.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you'll remember, we all were in agreement that the idea of shutting our boat landing down was because it would detour people from traveling to Port St. Joe. Not long after we made that decision, the county put out a letter, the chair put out a la, a letter that did a great job in saying, people, we love you down here, but not now. So the county did step out there and ask people to not come. But now that we've discovered that the two landings in the county that are still the ones that would attract people based on where they are in the season of saltwater fishing being open, group particularly, those people are still coming to our city. They are still going to the Piggly Wiggly to buy groceries and the two other departments. They're going to those stores. So we haven't accomplished what we really intended to do. And I don't think we can accomplish that unless we get the captain to close another, who leaves those two landings. That would be the truth. Because when I heard that two hundred people launched at White City, you know, it's not that long of a drive, a boat, but in at White City, it's still something to say. But I do believe that they come down to buy groceries, they go into Blue Water to buy the bait, tackle and all those things. So, you know, we, we really haven't accomplished much, I don't think.
Mr. Mayor, can I help with that? Mr. Mayor, I know it's a discussion amongst the commission, would, if it would help, this is Jeremy Novak again, Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, during their special meeting this morning, the county did vote to add to their declaration order to close the Highland View boat ramp, one of those two that Mr. Hoffman's talking about. So they didn't close.
It's not even operational.
I'm sorry?
Did you say Highland View?
Yes, they voted to close the park, the county park at Highland View with the put-in there this morning.
That, that boat ramp's under construction, it can't be used anyway, is that correct?
It's under construction, there's been people been trying to navigate that. The sheriff's folks this morning, they, it, there's been people trying to attempt to get to y'all's beach from that put-in one way or another, so they voted to close it down this morning.
Is there, is there any traction to do the other two?
They, they've discussed them, but they didn't vote on them this morning, Mr. Mayor.
Does the county have another meeting soon? Or would it just be called?
No, sir, there's no other meeting today that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to add that to y'all's discussion. Thanks, sir.
Okay, this guy's continuing to discuss the boat ramp, unless there's a motion to do something different. It's, it's closed for another seven days. Five, seven days, anybody, we can, we can call a special meeting next week if we'd like to discuss things, see how things are good-looking if we need to. But far as I go, the boat ramps just closed for the next seven days. Okay, all right, let's.
Mayor? Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Can we have our attorney look in? The one thing that wasn't discussed today was the legality of closing it to certain areas. Is there a way, can we have our attorney look to shut it down for just Gulf County residents? Is that even legal? Can we at least look at that before we meet again?
Yes, I will have a definitive answer for you then. But as of right now, cities, local governmental bodies are allowed to pass stricter force of regulations as opposed to what the governor has reported, except with the exception of religious church gatherings.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Langston?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
And I believe right now the city of Colorado has done that.
Commissioner Langston, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I wanna let the chief know that, we appreciate what you're out there, there's a few places over there that he broke up, the police came and did what he's supposed to do, like his person. But I just want you to keep account, in account, how many calls that you're gonna be getting to in this week. Because if it continues, I think that, I, I wouldn't wanna do it, but I think we may have to go, go to curfew. But just, just, just keep it, keep it in mind and of all the calls that you get and what's going on within the city about people being in a certain amount of distance between each other and the gathering. And I just wanted to bring that up so we can be thinking about that for next meeting, next week or something.
Okay, we can do that. All right, we're still on old business, some items that are, that are not listed on the agenda, but things we need to discuss while we're here. Jim, you wanna take that or you want me to go ahead and throw it out and we'll discuss over there? Okay, we, we've got, we've still got the NERTA grant and the workshop that we're required to hold. And Clay has come up with some scenarios for utilization of that grant. So Jim, you wanna discuss that?
Oh, yes, sir. What we have is we did, we did cancel our meeting. The next step in order to move forward, we do have to reschedule that meeting before we take any action on what we plan to take. Clay is working on some temporary plans that we will be rolling out in the next week or two. So we would need your input for that minimally, but before you can actually move forward on voting on which plan you wanna use, do you have to reschedule that workshop?
Jim, one, one thing I would like to make sure that, that he includes somewhere in that, and hopefully in our next meeting in two weeks, we'll have some, two or three scenarios we've been voting on. But I would want him to include the ditch behind the stack house, piping that little section which is currently fenced off, as well as that would be connected to the stormwater that goes under the baseball fields. That, that would not exclude us from, from maintenance of those areas because that, that pipe is damaged and leaking. So I think that would be allowed under that injunction that's, that's out there, would not be an improvement. So I'd, I'd like for him to, to include that little small section of the ditch as well as under the ball fields. It's got to be done at some point in time in the future. Anybody else got a comment or anything they wanna add on the NERTA?
I think over here, the locations that we were choosing, Jim, I think they all, are we gonna provide to these or you just pick a, pick a few that you wanna look into and vote on those?
He's looking at CIP. Yeah.
Basically, what there's, that's kind of a, it's kind of a wish list item. Some items, if you look at year one, two, three, you're supposed to have dedicated any funding for years four and five are wish list items on there, Commissioner Langston. So basically, just which, anything we can think of, we would like to be able to do that to help the community, we put on that list, will everything be guaranteed to be funded and completed, no sir. The way to look at it is if you think of anything that you would like for us to try to look into doing for the city, we want to have that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, with the NERTA, we have to reschedule that meeting before we can vote on anything on that, Mayor. They told us we have to have that workshop and have public input before we can.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, but still. Oh, yeah, that's fine. But still, like, in two weeks, bring something forward to us so we can, I guess, lack of a better word, we can be the first to look at it.
Yes.
And then, and then we'll schedule a workshop and hopefully take those forward and, you know, some of them, one of them still.
Can we hold the workshop with the same format we're holding this meeting today?
Basically what they said before was they wanted it to be at five o'clock or later like we had before. Run an ad in the newspaper. We have to have three of them. We had the one. Then we canceled it after the coronavirus. We canceled the second one on there. Bigger issue too is, uh, D E P and the water management district wanted to be a part of that meeting too, and they, and most of those folks are not allowed to travel at this point. So what I would suggest is as soon as we get the okay where they can travel, is probably as soon as St. Joe will be rescheduled at the second public hearing. Because they actually want to have public, they would like to have a forum where the public is actually here.
Uh, so, so we, I guess his question was can we do it by teleconference?
I think you probably could. Let me touch base with D E P and, um, Karen, who's actually running it from the water management district to see what they suggest to execute.
That's good. You, okay. Uh, next item, old business I've got listed here is, uh, Long Avenue. Uh, we, we had a great meeting with, uh, I forget the names, Jim. Help me out.
Tim Banks is the, actually the gentleman we spoke with, mayor that runs the state revolving fund on the wastewater side.
Yeah, we, we had a really good meeting with them and they're, to me, they were so fallen all over themselves to help us. They, but they, they have a timeline. They, they want us to get stuff engineering all ready to go, submitted to them by August. They'd like for us to do soup to nuts on Long Avenue, the whole nine yards pavement, uh, stormwater, water sewer, first street lift station. Nice neat little package, send it to them in August. They feel like we've got a really good chance to get some really good funding for that. So, uh, I've asked Jim to ask Clay to give us a task order. Or we giving him a task order, excuse me. We're giving him a task order to put all, put that together. If that's okay with you guys to, uh, get this thing, uh, on the front burner.
I'm per- perfectly fine with it. That was one of my one, number one things to get done. I'm sorry.
Everybody good with that to, to give Clay a task order to get fired up on that ASAP?
Yes, sir, Mayor. A good portion of this underway. The lift station, we've already gave them a task order to start the engineering on the lift station. We have the property secured for the new lift station. And we've already, uh, worked on the actual water line before. Uh, what we need is, we'll need to get a task order from the sewer, the storm, to put the road back together. And I'm talking to them tomorrow. This morning we'll have that and we'll have that before the next meeting on there to, to see exactly if, uh, to actually, uh, complete this project. We have to have it on their facilities plan. It has to be updated for Long Avenue, which we're in queue to get all this stuff done. Yes, sir, until we should see some more information.
Sounds good. Long Avenue is along the way to the project for sure. Uh, okay, uh, uh, rehab the police station. Uh, Jim, you got a report on that?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We did receive the first draft of the plans, uh, yesterday. So you had that in hand. What I'll do is I'll form that out each of you. The chief to kind of look at it to see if we're ready to go out to bid for, uh, the rehab of the police department.
Chief, have you seen that?
I haven't. I got the same email yesterday.
If, uh, yeah, all of us did. Uh, so if you'd like, uh, you and Jim, when y'all go over it good, uh, I'd meet with you if you'd like, tweak it, whatever you, that you think you need to do. So we can bring it to the full board and, uh, and see what they, uh, you know, if they want to move forward with bidding, bidding it out. Is that good for everybody? I think that's what we wanted to do. We just need to, uh, see what it's going to cost us to do it. Okay, uh, the other thing, uh, that I've been harping on for the last few meetings, I harped on again, 2020 census. We all need to be counted. We're all getting the little mailers in the mail. I think it takes 13 questions or something. It's very quick, very easy. If you ask them and you throw it away, you'll get a little blue reminder, uh, to remind you that it is a law that you, that you kicked out. So, uh, please, uh, St. Joe and Guff County need to be counted because all our funding for, for roads and schools and, uh, Medicaid and you name it. It, it depends on our count. If we're not counted, we're not going to get much funding. So I just encourage everybody to, to, uh, fill out the census. I, I got a reminder of my house on 20th Street, which is not there anymore, but because when I got it, I said, well, I'm not there. I just threw it away. Well, I got a reminder that said, you got to fill it out and say, are you living there or you're not living there? And, uh, it's the way you go in there and just say, nobody, nobody's there. It's, you know, quite a few scenarios and then you've got none of the above. And so click that and you're done. Uh, if you're not living where they sent you to. So anyway, 2020 census. Everybody take it seriously, please. All right, old business, Jim?
Yes, sir. The first item is the 2019 C C R report. This is a consumer accomplished report. This is a report that we, uh, have to do each year as in reference to our water, so our quality report. Uh, basically with the city of Fort St. Joe, we had 22 items that was tested for. All were well below the M C L requirements from D E Ps in the past and from the water. So we got good numbers and good reports. City of Fort St. Joe. This will actually be put on the city website and will also be put on our Facebook page.
Okay. Good job by them.
The next item we have is the C D B G V. This is for the project. Uh, we refer to it as a phase three, which is cleared Avenue C and Avenue D. Uh, we went out to bid for it and if you're over the page seventy-five, we have a copy of the bids. The bids came in well higher than what is allowable under the grant. Uh, so basically what we have done, Mr. Bruce Boustard should be online. Uh, basically he went back to D E O Department of Economic Opportunity and they said we could re-bid it as a rehab. What does that mean? That means we can go back and look at slip lining and repairing the play, the pipe in place. This should be a reduction based on not having to go back and repaint road, the whole road, just patches and, or various. So at this point, staff recommendation is that we go back out to bid again as a rehab because we just fell over them. Mr. Boustard, are you doing online?
Well, it, it sounded like it's, you guys already talked to him and he's talked to him. It's allowable and, uh, we can't go forward with what we got unless we want to come up with about, I don't know, 200, 300,000 dollars of our own money. So I think, uh, I think we just need the motion to move forward and re-bid it as a rehab.
I move that we move forward and, uh, re-bid it as a rehab.
You're good. And motion by Commissioner Langston to move forward. And is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hoffman. Can you discuss, and you got anything, Commissioner Ashbrook?
No, sir. I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All in favor? I, I'm most of the past five and a half. All right. That's good deal. All right, Jim, any?
Yes, sir, Mayor. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, since we're under old business minutes ago, I wanted to ask, has the city of Fort St. Joe sent any employees home and, and felt like it was a non-essential position? And either to stay at home or work from home?
Yes, sir. We have not at this point. We have an full staff.
Okay. And the reason I ask, if we do get in a position where some of our employees are at the house and some are still having to be at their job, um, then you're going to hear me argue that, that we should look at maybe paying those employees at a higher rate, the ones that are out there still hollering and working. Kind of like we did after the hurricane. You know, we sent a lot of people home after the hurricane. We asked, I believe, for volunteers initially and, uh, they were able to earn a higher rate of pay. So I, I, I don't want to really take action today. I want to just start opening the discussion of it. I, I know you sent an email out or, uh, asked each department head, you know, do we have any employees that need to, to, uh, stay at home or, and when you start thinking about the different jobs that our employees are tasked with, you have some that are, I, I would argue in a, in a safer environment, maybe the office or wherever, now we're not having the public go. And then we have some people like the police department who are, they don't have a choice, you know? So let's, uh, start thinking about the possibility of looking at putting in some type of hazardous pay or extra pay if it, if this thing continues to go forward, goes into the public leaker time.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. And, uh, you know, I said earlier, when I was thinking of our, our staff, uh, I, I honestly think, uh, 99% of everybody on our workforce are essential, uh, to keep this place running. Uh, as you said, there may be some in the office that possibly could, could work from home, uh, but, uh, but if we get to that point, yeah, I think the ones that stay that are going to have to work more should be paid more.
Yeah.
Uh, they have to pick up slack for somebody else. They need to be paid more. So I'm hoping we don't get to that point. I, all our guys are, are Johnny on the spot, or they know they're staying safe and doing what they're supposed to do while, even while they're on the job.
Right. And I believe we would probably be authorized to put in a request for being, uh, paid back from FEMA, even though I don't think we've been paid back yet from the hurricane. Uh, it's probably a three-year window. But if it's a possibility, let's take care of the people that's out there.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely agree with that. I mean, it's, I just would want to make sure we're mindful that we paid out, I believe the numbers were close to 400,000 and payroll overtime from the storm, wasn't it?
Payroll time that we turned in. There's a few other items in there, but it was over $400,000 requested back from FEMA. We still haven't got that.
But just be mindful of who we got out there, how, what we're paying and such. But I'm, I'd be definitely for it.
I, I, I think it's, I'm very disturbed, but you really have to do to, uh, to try to get our employees, um, if you think it continues to happen. Yeah, I definitely support that. A lot of things that we're going to have to probably change around.
That's all I had on.
Okay. Okay. Uh, anybody else got anything? I, I jotted down, uh, our, our normal things that aren't on here like public works. And any commissioner have any, any question or, or comments, uh, regarding public works?
Nope.
All right. None. Hearing none, uh, about Larry and water. I've talked to Larry, all his, all his staff are, are there and working and, uh, I'm going with nobody in sick or called in sick. So, uh, uh, we're good in the water department. Somebody knows anything different, please stop me and let me know. Uh, uh, Kevin in, in wastewater, uh, I've seen nothing going good. Haven't heard any staff problems or anything. So, uh, like I say, raise your hand, correct me if I missed something here.
Are you correct, Mayor? We're not actually spraying this month too. So this month is going to be dedicated to, I think, the spray field, clean dog, rehab, that type of thing. Because we've got the levels down to a making. I talked to, um, Mr. Medis, pointing out, feed on the actual pond. So we're in good shape right now. Had lack of rain.
Okay. All right. And, uh, uh, financial, I see Mike's on, online with us and, uh, if anybody got any questions for Mike, I think we're, we're hanging in there. Uh, Mike, I assume you're still working with the FEMA guys?
Uh, we are. We're, uh, continuing to process, uh, FEMA requests. Uh, we have some movement on some of the larger items, but nothing really to report yet. Uh, but like Jim said, we still haven't gotten that $400,000. Uh, I'm working on that now with the state, just trying to validate the, the, the information that we submitted. So we continue to work forward on, on all of those fronts.
All right. Very, very good. Appreciate that, Mike, because, uh, with all these other catastrophes, uh, we've had here lately, uh, they must spend a lot of money for long.
Uh, we hope not.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we'll just print some more. Uh, okay. Anything for Mike? Anyone, uh, uh, engineering, uh, we talked a little bit about that with Long Avenue and NERTA. Uh, anything at the, at least part of the plant. So what? Anything else, you know, Jim on engineering we need to talk about?
The only other thing I can think of to give you an update on the, uh, the bike path, the lighting. We're still trying to secure an easement for big energy to secure those bikes, put in place between 20 and 20 second. We can go back and forth the last couple of days.
And the easements with St. Joe company?
Yes, sir. They're trying to find with the walking path, uh, they're trying to make sure there's an easement in place. We're having to go find and win and how that can turn back 20 years.
Okay. All righty. Anything else? All right, guys. On my agenda, it says citizens to be heard. Or any, have any citizens called in and would like to speak at this time?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Go right ahead, Chester.
Uh, I'd just like to remind everyone that, uh, if, uh, in this pandemic going on, if there's any area where the pack or the churches can get involved with maybe passing out some of the food, uh, we do have a few vans over here, uh, that we would like to be included in some of that, uh, uh, decision-making, especially when having to transport food or people around. Uh, we would like, you know, at least be advised as how we can help, uh, so we can keep people from being, uh, I guess, moving around too much. So, uh, that and I also wanted to encourage anybody who do not, uh, know how to fill out the census report. I'll be available to help in any capacity I can.
Okay, very good. We talked about that previously about at some point in time, we may, uh, we may open up a fire station and have a laptop over there with a, with a city employee to help folks, uh, sign up. And Chester, uh, also on the food distribution, is the ministerial, uh, association, uh, in your area, uh, cooperating with the ministerial association in, in my area, uh, because I've heard some conversation from, uh, Jeffrey Lynch that, uh, they're, they're working to, to get food out on the weekends when the school's not, uh, uh, providing the food. Do you know anything about that?
Well, I didn't hear about the weekend, but we are open to, uh, help with transportation as much as possible. We had a meeting with the Ministry of Alliance saying that we was willing to do that. Uh, and all of a sudden we found that other people were already doing it. Uh, we're not in a, uh, agreement against that. But we do want to be part of it so that we can make sure that our people are not having to transport to a different area just to pick up food. I think we can do it, uh, uh, by coming together and just bringing it to this area rather than them having to cross the tracks or cross the section of town to go get it.
Well, right, right. It, it, uh, we, the whole point is we need to coordinate our efforts and, uh, everybody working together, we, we get, get through this thing. So, uh, that, uh, that's, that's very important. Uh, Commissioner Langston got something to say?
I think the school. I think the school is doing a great job, you know, they're getting, got the bus drivers stopping the kids, food off there when they go to the, they, they bus stop, you know, so they're, they're doing a wonderful job making sure they have it on the, uh, during the week. And, um, during the weekends, I guess, it'd be a good thing for both Minister of Alliance to get together and, and distribute food throughout the community. Helping each other at times. During these times, you know, it, it, it's, it's not a section, you know, section that you, you're doing these times or where it should be all the time that we're, we're together as one, you know? So I think it'd be good for both of them to work with that.
I'll, I'll pass that on to, uh, to Jeffrey Lynch. I appreciate you not on it already. But also, uh, Chester, while I've got you and I've, I've talked, uh, Commissioner Langston about this before. But with your churches and your alliance over there, I, I don't know if you're having services. If you do, you're, you, of course, you got to limit it. But, uh, that, that is concern about any. but, uh, that, that is a concern about anytime people get, get close together, uh, we're, we're hanging in there good right now. But once it starts, it's gonna, it can be bad in a hurry.
Well, Mayor, well, we, we're being in compliance, we're staying, basically inclined, we did have churches, we only had four members. We're spreading out the way we're supposed to be, uh, and doing the church services, only eight, 10, and we're trying to do as much as we can by teleprompt.
Very good, if you'd pass that on to the other pastors, uh, we, we think it's, everybody's suffering right now, but, and we need church, but, but, uh, we can have church from home and, and keep this thing away for a while.
We, we are at a bare minimum, and we're making sure that, that we're in compliance with the protocol.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, any other citizens online? No other citizens online, okay, we're down to discuss an item by commissioners. Anybody got anything they'd like to bring up that we hadn't already talked about?
Mayor, I've got one item.
Go ahead.
I had a call from the Gulf County Women's Group this morning, asking if they could put 100 small pinwheels in the median on 71 for Child Abuse Awareness Week. Did we have any problem with them doing that? They've done it in Weewaw, and they're just asking permission to do it in Port St. Joe.
Uh, anybody got any comments on that? I, I don't really see where that opened up a can of worms by any means, uh, uh, the, you know, it's in the city limits. I think it's still state, is it state property, Jim?
Yes, sir, state property, we actually got all the contact out there tonight, thanks for the homework, um, but coming to the point of, oh, man. How, Commissioner Ashbrook, how long are we looking to keep her in there so they can get a mode or make?
I, I believe it's just a week, Jim, how about I just have her contact you directly?
That's perfectly fine.
That's fine, if I got any objection to that, we'll let Jim handle it.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, and is that all?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
I think Commissioner Hoffman has something.
I saw an email that went out, kind of same discussion, where, I believe the email was asking for permission for a group to put banners of the high school seniors, or has that been resolved?
Yes, sir, I did respond back, I told them that we perfect found it.
Okay.
There was banners of the kids.
Yeah, I think that'd look really good on, on where we normally put Christmas banners and those type of things, and have a picture of the kid or something in it, right? I think it'd look great, yeah.
The only other item that I was asked to mention was, uh, I received a complaint that the landfill was burning, and they were aggravated with the smoke. And I said, well, I feel like if the county had a solution, or if anyone else had a solution to put the fire out, we'd put the fire out. I did receive a call, so.
I don't think there's any solution.
I know, it's some funny guy's commercial, and all that, bar, and everything that sort of, well, other than all that, I don't think there's a solution to it.
The only thing to do that.
It burned in, after small for a year and a half. That's all I had.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain most of the adjournments, and we'll, we'll be back, uh, the, in two weeks, and let's call a special meeting, uh, to discuss boat ramp issue. All right, we're adjourned, thank you all for being here online. Good job, Ray, that worked, I guess, worked pretty good.